Welcome, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Director's Organizational Meeting for Monday, November 2nd, 2020. Sonny, let's go over the adjustments to the agenda.
For today's meeting, City Council Agenda November 2nd, 2020. On the consent agenda, I'll be reading items 1A through 1E separately. Section 2, I'll be calling items 2A through 2D together. Those are just setting the hearing dates for future liquor apps. Item 4, or excuse me, Section 4 for public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll be calling items 4A and 4B together. 4C and 4D together. 4E and 4F will be called together. And the applicant for items 4E and F is unable to attend today, so we will need to delay the action two weeks until November 16th, which he did confirm that he will be present at that time. Item 4E and 4F. I'll be calling items 4G and 4H together, two separate SDLs but the same ownership. And I'll be calling item 4J and 4K together. Also, for public hearing resolutions, I was just notified that there is a possible motion to amend number 1, to substitute, to accept a substitute resolution, I believe.
On 5A?
5A, correct. And then for Section 6, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions, I have a possible motion to amend item 6A, and then also have item 6A and B moved to pending list. Resolution 7, First Reading 7A through 7F. Ordinance's First Readings is items 8A through 8H. And on our pending list, Date Uncertain, Item 9D, there will be a motion to remove that item off of our pending list with an action date. 9D as in David.
D as in David.
Correct.
Action date of when?
Two weeks from the 23rd.
And you said 9D as in David. Correct. That is Appeals by Nancy Seltzer Adel. Okay. Sonny, I have a question. Did you say for petitions and communications, we're going to be voting on 2A and 2B?
In Sections 2? Nope. I'll be calling items 2A through 2D together.
Oh, okay. But we don't...
And we'll vote on those together as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And only, it's only because these are just the setting the hearing date resolutions for future liquor applications that will be coming forward.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Thank you, Sonny. Appreciate it. The mayor like to come forward?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Thank you for coming down.
Good afternoon, Chair McGinnis, members of the council. Thanks for having me. Happy November. I just wanted to touch on a few items that we have to share today about some of our federal fund expenditures to assist with the pandemic response, some update on the Economic Recovery Task Force work, touch on a new initiative that we're a part of related to fiscal health and equity, and then the draft Climate Action Plan. So, got a few items today. With our CDBG and ESG funding that we have received at the city level, we've been working through our urban development department with community partners to address a number of social issues that have been exacerbated by the pandemic. So, we continue to make rent and utility payments to try to keep people safe, healthy, and housed. And as of, let's see, last week, they paid out $75,788 to 30 households in Lincoln. And that brings our total so far, we've distributed over $600,000 to nearly 300, to, yeah, nearly 300 households total. Urban Development has been working diligently on that. They've been authorized to receive an additional $420,000 in CARES funds and another $1.1 million received for CDBG. So, we're very grateful for those resources to address some of the most vulnerable residents' concerns. Also, just wanted to note that we have a, there's been a person hired in Lincoln Commission on Human Rights who's funded with ESG dollars to address eviction-related issues and concerns. So, that person will be working collaboratively, that person works collaboratively with tenants and landlords and helps people who are headed to eviction court. So, last week, they helped two people avoid eviction by finding funds to address some of those eviction-related concerns. And we think as evictions potentially rise in the, going into next year, based on resources being utilized and used up, that this person will be helpful in providing an additional advocacy and support role to those who are looking to resolve their circumstances. Again, those are emergency solution grant dollars that are funding that position in the Commission on Human Rights. And then, our Economic Recovery Task Force recommendations led to two events last week that we're, we were so pleased to be a part of. One was a workshop on procurement and how to become more qualified to compete for city contracts with a focus on women and minority-owned businesses. And Bob Walla made himself available for that and is continuing to have office hours for those who want to understand how they might qualify to be a registered vendor. So, we're really pleased to have that outreach with our business community. And again, covid19.linkin NE.gov website, business resources, you can find more information or just call the purchasing department. And then, the other event was a business-to-business town hall that was, featured a number of local business owners talking about steps they've taken to address social connectedness and well-being for their employees, because we know that's, of course, a concern and something that all employers are looking to tend to. So, having them have a forum where they could share their ideas and resources locally was something that came out of those recommendations for the task force. Again, they'd surveyed 265 businesses. This was one of the top requests, was this kind of B2B support. And then, Lincoln is one of 30 cities across the country that's been chosen to participate in the Fiscal Health and Equity Initiative, a new initiative of Bloomberg Philanthropies and What Works Cities. And what this means is that they'll be working with the 30 cities, including Lincoln, to confront fiscal challenges and working specifically with municipal budget and finance directors. So, that'll largely be a commitment coming out of our finance department. Brandon Kaufman and Sherri Wolf will be participating, along with Adele Burke out of my office. And I'll be participating as needed in that program. But it is going to bring together a lot of different expertise in municipal finance and budgeting to try and support cities across the country as we deal with sort of unprecedented impacts to our city resources. It also just provides a nice network for discussion and idea sharing as we face so many similar circumstances. And then, last week, last Thursday, we released the draft of the Climate Action Plan. This was put together by the Verdis Group. As you know, that work was undertaken with their expertise and in collaboration with the Climate Resiliency Task Force, with the Mayor's Environmental Task Force, with a Sustainability Working Group here within the city organization. And so, all of those groups, along with citizen engagement, helped inform the draft. But now we're entering the next phase of the process where we want to have an even more robust community engagement piece, clearly challenging during a pandemic, but we are determined nonetheless to have a robust community engagement process. And that will be led by Miki Esposito, as you may have heard in the announcement. So, she's come to join as a special counsel to the mayor and to lead our resilient Lincoln initiative and undertake that important work so that this can truly be a community-wide and community-led, community-driven initiative to reduce our carbon emissions and help prevent some of the more considerably negative impacts of a rapidly changing climate. We think that's really important as we look to shore up our infrastructure and protect people and property here in our community. And that is what I have for you today. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mayor?
All right. You know where to find me. Thank you.
Coming down. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on. Pat Lopez? Yes?
Thank you, Pat. Coming down. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. I just want to give you an update on where we're at right now. As of yesterday, we had 132 cases reported, and that brings us to 9,792 cases in our community. And so, the week ending October 31st, our case numbers were 894, which is the highest number of cases reported in a week so far. And our previous weekly high total was 741 on 10/24. So, we've had an average of 694 cases a week in the past five weeks. You know, 57% of our cases to date have been reported since September 1. So, in the last two months, I'm sure you all noticed, on Saturday, we reported 247 cases. I kept thinking, Tim was talking to me in different numbers, but once we grasped that, and when we had some time to go through and look at it, we realized there was a glitch in the state computer system reporting. But even given that, you know, we had 83 cases on Friday. So, some of those cases reported on Saturday should have been reported on Friday. But even given that, knowing that, we still had a total of 350 cases between Friday and Saturday, which is a huge concern to us. So, in the last two weeks, 40% of our cases are in the 30 to 59 age group. Another 14% are in the 60 to 79 age group. Our case investigations suggest this new increase in cases is really due to family, get-togethers, our social gatherings, and really, sometimes relatively small numbers, like 10 or so. In the last two weeks, on average, we're seeing 30% of our cases related to someone else in the household, being close contact. 44% are, over 3,100 of our cases are reported, recovered. And you all have seen that we are at 45 deaths in Lancaster County, and that's 46% of all of our deaths have occurred in October. So, that's been a really huge concern. Our largest number of deaths before that was in May, when we had eight, and that's when we were having the meatpacking situation occurring. Our positivity rate was 18.1% last week. And our overall positivity rate for Lancaster County is 9.5. Our, what we call our rolling average of cases, our seven-day rolling average increased from 77 cases a day in the first week of October to 131 on Saturday. Hospital usage, which you've been hearing about, both the CHI system, and I'm saying system because it's including all their hospitals in the state, and BRIAN are now at their Level 1 part of the surge where they're not doing overnight electives. They're still doing some electives, and sometimes "electives" is kind of a misleading term, because sometimes it's doing different types of heart casts or other things. So, those will continue to go on as needed, those critical things. But we're continuing to work closely with them in reviewing our surge plan in Lancaster County. So, I just wanted to keep you up to date on that. As of midnight last night, we had 74 patients in Lancaster County in the hospital due to COVID-19, and 35 of them are from our county. And five of the nine patients on ventilators are from our community. The hospitals are also seeing other individuals with high, high needs too. So, it's not just the COVID individuals. But if you remember, early on, we tend to have more patients with COVID-19 from outside of the community coming in. Now, it's frequently the same level or higher from within our community itself. The other, we're still staying at, we have 495 cases in the K through 12 schools. You probably heard, there was a situation at one of the schools, and it was related to teachers and potential breach in the protocols that were going on. But we still haven't been able to identify any student-to-student transmission in the classroom. The university is staying at about 1,308 cases. UNL is doing enhanced testing, so they're randomly selecting in addition to those who are ill. The governor just announced at 10:00 today, I didn't hear the full thing, but I wanted to especially say this for Councilwoman Ward, we've been really concerned about our long-term CARES and the status of living, and the stress they were under in all the continual testing and the resources. The governor announced today that they have applied to CMS, Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services, to have additional funding for the long-term care centers, and they anticipate it will be $40 million. It'll be retroactive from May. And so, their rate right now for Medicare is $200 a day, and that will go up $20. So, almost an average of 10% increase, which is sorely needed. That's one of our biggest concerns is staffing there and, and keeping people engaged. So, I'll end there.
Any questions for Director Lopez? Seen them. Thank you for coming down. Oh, sorry. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Lopez, thank you for the CMS information, all that you're doing to work with the senior care providers. My question relates actually to the dial, and I apologize, I've not taken an opportunity to watch your news conference from Friday. What, so you probably addressed this, but what does it take, what factor is left, and I know it's your numbers and science, that, to put us in the red dial? And that's my first question. And on the heels of that, do you think that would, is it your belief that that would get the attention of our community to understand the increase in the numbers and how serious this is becoming?
Well, I think, you know, on Friday, we talked about that we're really on the verge of really going into red now. So, we're still continuing to look at all those factors that we looked at. But looking at hospitalizations, ICU beds, case numbers, contact tracing, testing, availability. But I think as we continue to see that rise, and I've just shared with you our increase in case numbers this weekend, and the changes that the hospitals are implementing, all those things are going to factor in if we go to red. And then, we have some guidance in there about, we would really want people to stay at home as much as possible, workplaces to let people telework as much as possible to reduce density in the office. But we would want people just going out for work, school, medical needs, and other necessities. And then, we just implemented some new directive health measures yesterday. We're going to get those in place and work through those. But in the meantime, we're going to be looking at what else we might need to do for a short period of time to really get our numbers down and share with the community where it would be, if we, if we go to red, what's it going to look like, what's it going to take for us to move, move away from that red? And even though we're seeing this in our community, other, it's probably hard to believe this, but actually, Hall County has more deaths per population than we do, along with Douglas County and Sarpy County and a couple others. And our case numbers are lower among those largest populated communities in our state. But this is still, you know, we're very concerned about what's happening. And to that end, we have met with our spiritual leaders, and we'll be talking with them again. Talked with youth sports, both schools and clubs and venues to see that. We've talked with our bar and restaurant owners. So, that's some of the work we're doing behind the scenes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Director Lopez. Appreciate it. We'll move down then to, pardon me, Transportation. Director Elliott, one of my favorite people. I hope she's here to give us good news.
I do have some good news. Thank you, Elizabeth Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities. As you all know, we had a vacancy in our Assistant Director of Transportation. I thought, given kind of the social distancing, this would probably be the best opportunity to introduce our new Assistant Director of Transportation. Thankfully, as of Thursday of last week, we now have, Ron Caldi is now the Assistant Director of Transportation. I'll ask him to come on up and introduce himself. But Mr. Caldi does come to us from Florida. So, although he is not necessarily familiar with snow yet, he had a good introduction as he moved here on Sunday. So, with that, I will let him introduce himself, and thank you for taking a few minutes.
That one should work too.
Thank you very, can you all hear me fine? Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And yes, Director Elliott has become one of my favorite people. I don't want to take up a lot of your time or the council member's time, but I just wanted to introduce myself and answer any questions that you may have of me. As Director Elliott said, I am from Florida. I'm wearing my orange Sunshine State tie right now, but you will probably not see me in that any longer, because I have a nice red one that I'm trading in, trading in from the Sunshine State to the, to the Good Life State. I have almost 30 years of experience in civil engineering and transportation engineering, a very broad background in local government operations, state government operations, and then 15 years in, in private industry. So, I have a very broad background in, in engineering and the transportation business. I graduated from Florida State, good or bad. I'm a product of the state of Florida education system. I graduated from my local high school in my local county in a rural town in Florida, went to the community college and received an associate's degree, got my Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Florida State, and a Master of Science in Engineering Management from the University of South Florida in Tampa. I am looking forward to bringing my years of experience and my education to, to the benefit of the city of Lincoln and the taxpayers and citizens. On a personal note, I am married to my high school sweetheart. Unfortunately, I was not her high school sweetheart. I have three wonderful and beautiful children that are all young adults now that are pursuing their careers, one in the Air Force, one at the University of Central Florida, and the one... one at the University of South Florida right now. So I've got my family underway. So with that, you know, that's just an introduction of myself, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have of me.
Okay. Has Director Elliott warned you of all of us yet, or filled in?
But she didn't warn me off.
Okay, you're still here. Yes.
Well, I know this is a tough question, you know. I was born and raised in Nebraska and grew up with lots and lots and lots of snow. And if you're a Floridian, tell us what your, I guess, engineering background has provided you with your experience with dealing with winter weather conditions, which some seasons we get way too much of, so.
Sure. And Councilwoman, I'll be honest with you, direct snow experience, I have none. I've not grown up with snow. But emergency response and storm preparedness, I have a lot of. We do get a lot of storm events and hurricanes. I'm very experienced and knowledgeable of pre-event planning, during event operations, and post-activities.
Okay, here's another tough question. Have you ever driven in snow?
Sunday night I did, and I had a pretty good scare, to be honest with you. Got a little fishtailing on I-29.
Any other questions? No, thank you very much for coming up and being part of our LTU team, which is really a strong team, I believe.
Thank you very, very glad, very glad and excited to be here.
Thank you for letting us take a few minutes.
Thank you.
We'll have to get you a snow shovel.
And some snow boots.
Snow for hurricanes.
Okay, we'll move on to Boards and Communications, DEC, Councilperson Ward.
Yep, thank you very much. So the DEC met on October 20th, the week before last. Of note to you all would be, I think primarily, the update on our customer financing obligations, which we touched upon last month and I reported out. It is, it held true that the NSP, the Nebraska State Penitentiary, was the only one of our clients that did not opt in with our bond increase, and they're our newest and the only customer that chose not to do that. Staff estimated that could mean perhaps $36,000 to them in higher interest costs, but that's only an estimate. So that was our primary update. We did have a special meeting by phone last week, as we had, and some of you may have heard, a leak, a water leak in the main down in the Haymarket, in the Canopy Loft area and Pinnacle Bank Arena area. So we had to meet by phone last week to vote on a $47,000 boiler that was brought in by John Henrys to take care of that water main. So that's your update on the District Energy Corporation.
Thank you, Councilperson Ward. Councilperson Bowers.
Not the major report, just reviewing some committees for the problem resolution team. I don't believe there were any closures.
Okay. Councilperson Ward, would you like to talk about the JPA?
I would.
What's the Haymarket JPA?
Certainly, thank you. So we met last week on October 29th, on Thursday. We are, thanks to Director Johnson, still working through, and I know we've seen a plan since our meeting on Thursday already, thank you, Director Johnson, for that, a tribute bench master plan for some very, first various generous donation. That contributor is in our audience. So we will be approving that at our next meeting in November. We just weren't quite ready, so we delayed that vote. Other than that, and thank you again, Director Johnson, for that, we voted to, on expenditures for concrete areas at PBA that are starting to wear out due to weather and things beyond concrete that I would pretend to understand. So that's your update on the JPA. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Christian, or Councilperson Schob, or Washington, anything on the Internal Liquor Committee?
Well, we did have a meeting last Monday, and a lengthy discussion, broad-ranging on SDLs, special events, and dine-out Lincoln, and the interaction between all of those. And I think we understand some things a little better than we did when we went into the meeting. But one thing that came out that I'll report is the mayor's office asked us what our opinion was on continuing or ending the dine-out Lincoln program, and it was a unanimous recommendation from the ILC that we let it end.
What was the date that it's supposed to end?
That's up to the mayor's office.
Originally, the dine-out program was going to end on the 31st of October. A few folks came in and asked, on private property, to extend their dine-out, and we don't have a problem with that being extended on private property, but on city property, absolutely.
Okay.
So that's done administratively through the mayor's office.
Did you, thank you, did you happen to discuss how businesses and restaurants and bars are going to be notified of it ending? Or do we know, or is it just going to expire and then they don't get to apply? Or is that just to be worked out? I'm just curious, because we'll get asked.
There is only one, actually, there's one, two, sorry, there's two dine-out applications on city property, and their application had an end date of the 31st. And one of them will see this afternoon coming forward for an SDL. So they're gonna, they're figuring out what they can do in the next couple of weeks.
Very good, thank you very much.
Okay. I'll give a quick DLA report, since Councilperson Ward's been to every meeting last week. So we had a presentation by David Young, talking to us about his different ways of putting up communication towers throughout downtown, and how we're testing with, is it NEXT? A group that we are partnering with the university on doing anywhere from microwave to different resources. A lot of this is rural broadband testing that we will be doing throughout downtown Lincoln. They'll be putting it on different light poles downtown Lincoln and see how it works in an urban environment. Some large grants that we're in line for, that if we get would be huge for the university and for our communications team that are working on a lot of this broadband. I know David is working hard now also on doing some 5G negotiations with a couple providers, and maybe we can get 5G in town a little quicker than we were supposed to have. So David gave a good presentation, he's doing a lot of things, so if anybody wants to, it wouldn't be bad to have a conversation with David sometime. The Strategic Plan Committee is still updating their strategic plan. I don't know if you saw the, this, I'm going to get, saw the editorial in the paper yesterday talking about how downtown Lincoln is going to evolve and come out of this as looking different. We, in our office, that we manage over 2 million square feet downtown, believe the same thing. It's going to look a lot different in three years. And so the strategic plan for downtown Lincoln, to look at how this is going forward, is a great timing, putting that thing, putting that together and starting to look at it and see what changes are going on. And a lot of it is going to be residential for downtown. How much residential? And that, we had a discussion with Todd Ogden, he actually came and spoke to a real estate group I'm involved in, he talked about having an extra 6,000 residents here in the next three years in the downtown areas, a possibility. So that will change, what we were looking at is what kind of retail uses, what kind of other uses may be needed for downtown Lincoln, other than just office and daytime uses. Okay, I went on too long. The only other thing is the downtown holiday lights, the 12 Days of Christmas that have been on a lot of buildings, they may just decide to put it all in Tower Square and have a go-to place and a festival place. And they're talking to Parks and Rec as we speak, about being able to set it all up in one location, it'd be easier, a little more affordable for them to run and set it up, and placing it all throughout downtown on the different buildings. Anything else? Okay. Any questions? Okay. Also, is there anybody who'd like to speak with any of the directors? Yes, Dan?
Mr. Marvin, please.
Okay.
Lynn Johnson, Dan Marvin, and Johancy Christie.
Okay. I was going to bring up that we all need to probably talk with Tim C., if you get a chance after this. If you get a chance, talk with Tim on a few items. Yes?
Just got a quick question for, just got a quick question for Director Carey.
Yes. Chief Blameister?
Chief Blameister and Johancy.
Okay, thanks. The directors' meeting stands adjourned.